We are now going to move into our Districts Two and Three Board of Commissioners. Each of you are going to be given two minutes, certainly for an introduction. So let me quickly introduce all of you so that our attendees know with whom we are speaking. We have our incumbent, Mr. Chuck Bagley. Opponents, Mark Banks, Terry Mitchell for District Two. District Three, we have incumbent Vicki Gazaway. Did I say that correctly? Wonderful. And opponent, Timmy Shellnut. All right? So we're going to move into our two-minute introductions. We're going to start with District Two, our incumbent Chuck Bagley. Two minutes, sir.
Good morning. Want to thank the Tribune, and I want to thank the Chamber for holding conference. Want to thank my beautiful wife Fran and the supporters I have in the crowd. Four years ago, I came before you, and in my left hand, I had some strings. And those strings represented the individuals, the organizations, the elected officials that made this a vibrant community. I concluded in the right hand with a rope, showing you that when these groups work together, we're with strength and we can carry on. Today, I come to you as Lieutenant Commander Chuck Bagley of the USS Walton County. Over the past four years, we have sailed through some very turbulent times. We have had rough waters. The sea of economic development has been very inconsistent and turbulent. However, we survived 2009, 10, 11, and 12. In July, our fund balance was 21 million in '09. Today, it's 22 million. We have improved it. I sailed District Three through some swells of rough water, three major conflicts that were controversial. Every one of them was satisfied. However, some of the citizens didn't like how fast we got it done, but they did like the outcome. My three previous elections, I have promised, keep you informed, keep you educated, and how have I done it? For seven years, I hold a quarterly town hall meeting. By five years, I've sent out emails across the county so everybody would know what's going on. I am accessible, accountable, and approachable. I have demonstrated that I am prepared and qualified. I'm your best candidate. Please vote for me to return as your county commissioner, District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are going to hear from Mr. Mark Banks. Sir, if you could just pass that mic over. Awesome. Thank you.
Sir. First, thank you, Captain. I didn't bring any props this morning. I just got what I've got. A lot of times, people running for office can promise some of the most outlandish things that you ever hear in your life. They could come through with a lot of things, they'd promise I'd go far and get out of the way. But we hear people talk about they're going to add services and they're going to cut taxes. You better run from them if they ever promise you that, because you can't do both. We can cut taxes, but we're going to have to cut services if we do. We can have services, but we're going to have to raise taxes. We've got to find out what the people of Walton County wants and can afford. We've got to away from that. I had a little joke I was going to tell, but he took away from me a while ago. A man told me that politicians, if you break it down, poly means many and text means bloodsucker. So you get politicians, you got many bloodsuckers. That's what I hear a lot as I go out and knock on doors. People are fed up with government, from the local level to the federal level. They're fed up with it. Because we tell them we're going to do things, and we don't come through. Only thing I can tell you I do as commissioner is I've worked a lifetime building a reputation as being a fair and honest person. If I serve as commissioner, four years from now, I'll still be able to look you in the eye and tell you I do the best job that I can possibly do to represent this county in a manner that my family and my God would be proud of. There is no golden cash that I can offer you. There is no golden cash that any of these candidates can offer you. But I want to sit down with seven people and try to come to an agreement that is best for the people of our county. Many members of the school boards, former members of the school boards here this morning. I served with them, we butted heads a lot of times, but I still consider them friends. You can be friends with people and still air out your problems and get to work together. We got to elect people that will sit down and work our problems out. I feel like I am that candidate.
Sir, thank you. And I will say about the joke, I'm going to borrow yours, you can borrow mine. How's that? All right? We are now going to hear from Mr. Terry Mitchell. Sir, opening remarks, two minutes.
I want to thank all of you for coming out this morning. I've got to say that, to start with, that I am not a politician. Never have been. This is my first run. However, I've lived in this county 63 years. I was born two miles up the road. I live at the county line near Gwinnett County now. I'm married to Hannah Gillyn Mitchell for 45 years. We have two children and six grandchildren. We're one of those parents that has taken on a very unusual role the last 10 years as our son chose a career in military. And he was deployed to Iraq in 2003, and we dealt with that. Then he was deployed in 2010 to Afghanistan, and we dealt with that. I have to tell you, it's probably been the most difficult periods of my life to have my son walking around in a foreign country with a bunch of terrorists. In my opinion, the primary thing that concerns this county is public safety. As we continue to grow past the 91,000 mark, our crime continues to increase. As of today, 66 percent of your budget is spent on public safety. It doesn't leave a whole lot to pay for the rest of the stuff. And as I told the commissioners, when they presented the budget last month, that as I studied the budget for two solid days, I looked at it and, you know, I told them that they had done an outstanding job, because there's a lot of problems that they have that they can't, that they can't deal with. But anyhow, I come to you as a concerned citizen, a man that's lived in the community for a long time, and I have a deep concern and a deep dedication to doing what is right. And if we can't, if we don't need it, and we can't afford it, and it's not right, then we don't need it. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. We are going to now move to District Three incumbent Vicki Gazaway. Ma'am, two minutes, opening.
Is it on? Okay, good. Good morning. It is through a lot of prayer and consideration that I've decided to run for District Three Commissioner once again. During my tenure, I talked to the citizens of District Three and of Walton County and found out that their biggest concern is this economy. And I'm here to say that I get that. We're all experiencing those issues. So some of the things that we have done in trying to help those situations is to maintain financial stability here in Walton County. And we've done that through maintaining basically the same fund balances as audited numbers, indicating that we have maintained that stability. And in addition to maintaining stability, we have moved forward with major projects. You've heard us talk about our reservoir. And one of the things that I'm proud to stop is the agreement that we're entering into with the City of Walton Grove for the wastewater treatment facility and sewage system there. Both of those projects are going to open up major opportunities for businesses and for jobs to come to Walton County for our citizens. Additionally, we have worked and supported our amazing Development Authority and Chamber of Commerce in bringing in some great businesses, including Baxter International, which is going to provide so many jobs to our area, as well as expanding existing businesses. So we're thankful that we've had those opportunities. Additionally, we are continuing to provide the services that our citizens want and deserve, including things like our roads and bridges. We still have a ways to go on that, but we are continuing to provide those services for resurfacing and maintenance of those projects. We also have upgraded our fire department and our EMS department through new equipment. We've done that through SPOS funds and through the gracious contributions through the Walton County Health Foundation. We're thankful for those opportunities. We have one of the best parts in rec departments, facilities, and programs in the state. We've brought in a driver's license facility here in Walton County, which is a great convenience to our citizens here. And we've been able to maintain our employees unlike any of our neighbors, and we just appreciate the things that they've done, and I'm equipped and ready to move forward with Walton County. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. Mr. Timmy Shellnut, two minutes, sir. Opening remarks.
My name is Timmy Shellnut, and I live in District Three, Walton County. I was born and raised there. I've been there for 48 years. When I got married, I told my wife Gina, I said, "You can pick either side of my mama as far as I'm going." And she's been a wonderful wife for 27 years. And I've been a deacon at Corinth Christian Church for about 25 years. I've got three children, Tamara, Tabitha, and TJ. Tamara is a middle, elementary school teacher. Tabitha is a nurse, Newton County. And my son TJ is not a problem child, but he's a go-getter. We're trying to get him through college now. I enjoy farming with my dad, and now I enjoy farming with my son. He loves it also, as I do. I've been self-employed for about 29 years. I've worked in construction. I've built roads. I've built infrastructure. I've worked with many municipalities over the years. And I've been on the Walton County Water Authority for 12 years. I've been the chairman for four years, and I look forward to representing you if elected over the next four years. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. And I just want to let you know I was one of those go-getters, so there is hope. Ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do for both districts, we're not going to certainly handle each district individually as we did for the board chairs. So collectively, we're going to ask you three questions. All of you are going to have an opportunity to respond to each question, one minute apiece. Then, of course, we're going to have our closing remarks. And I would be remiss if I did not represent my family appropriately and say ladies first. So, Ms. Gazaway, first question to you, ma'am, is what specific qualifications, skills, and experience do you possess that would make you a good county commissioner?
Okay. Well, I have lived here in Walton County all of my life. I had the experience, and I had served, working in Walton County for 20 years previously to serving on the board. And I can tell you that while that information helped me a lot, it's a different world when you start serving on the Board of Commissioners. So there's a learning curve, and I've already experienced that learning curve and think I would be able to offer a lot in continuing my service. Also, I have relationships that are established here in Walton County with our local as well as our state officials. And so I understand the problems. I have listened to the citizens. I've heard what they're saying, and I think that I would be able to continue to serve well. We've got some great projects that are going on now. I want to be able to see the completion of those projects. So we look forward to continuing to serve if you choose to vote for me. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. Mr. Mitchell, one minute, sir. What specific qualifications, skills, and experience do you possess that would make you a good county commissioner? One minute for response.
I started my career at 18, working for Georgia Power Company. And I worked in the MIS department for 10 years. In the last three years, I actually had created my own job within the company. In that job, I reviewed all the equipment purchases for the whole state and all the power plants for the equipment that went in to run the administration side of those departments. And as I dug through all this stuff, I found many dollars that were being wasted. And one of my neighbors called me a digger the other day. It's not a dirt digger. It's a digger of facts. And I do have a great interest in digging up the facts and trying to get to the truth of the matter and trying to reduce waste. Waste is a thing that I hate to see. I think we're at a crossroads at the county at this point because we can't continue to operate in the mode that we're in into the future. I agree with Mr. Ethan on that, that we are not immune to the problems of this nation. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Bagley, one minute, sir. FYI, I've randomized the questions and names. I don't want to catch you off guard.
That's fine. The experience I have is seven and a half years of local government experience. I've attended the Carl Vinson Institute at the University of Georgia, attaining the highest degree as a city councilman, and I advanced degrees as a county commissioner. I have relationships built across this county and into the state. I'm not penny wise and pound foolish. I do look at all situations. I look at what's the impact today and how is it going to affect us 10 years from now? Many times, local government will pass laws, ordinances, and they throw out the baby with the bathwater. So far, I have not done that. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Banks, one minute for response.
Of course, everybody's saying they've lived in Walton County. Of course, we all live here, we may regret it in here, but I feel like that I've been involved in Walton County for a lot of years with my kids in sports, all the way through schools, homeschool councils, booster clubs. Then I ran for school board. I've been on the school board for seven years. I served two years as vice chairman, two years as chairman of the school board. I was also on the tax assessment board three years prior to that. I feel like giving me great experience as to where the assessment process for property comes from. That's about the qualifications I've got. I want you all to take a look at them, and I think mine's good enough that I've served as a good commissioner.
Mr. Banks, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Shellnut, one minute, sir.
I think my best qualification for this job is, if you'll ask anybody that knows me, they'll tell you I'm a people person. I love people. I love to get out and meet people. I try never to meet a stranger, and I'll always be there for the people of Walton County, one-on-one, face-to-face, eye-to-eye, and we'll work through the problem. I have a great support. Family has lived here our whole lives, and any problems, I know they'll be behind me and they'll help me. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. We're going to move to question number two, and we're going to start with Mr. Bagley. Sir, what do you feel are the most important challenges facing Walton County, and how would you address those challenges if elected as District Commissioner?
First challenge we have is to maintain stability. Stability economically and stability with our county employees. We don't need to become a county that becomes a training ground for other municipalities and counties. Got to take care of this. Thomas Jefferson was asked, "How do you cross the Fox River?", the most turbulent river in those times. He said, "You don't cross the Fox River. You wait till you get there to see what the problems are. This economy will determine how we do those." Our second biggest problem, you will decide on July 31st. Everyone before me has talked about infrastructure and transportation. If T-SPOS doesn't pass, we have an economic burden. However, we don't have a SPOS payment that we have to make. We will look at those, and the Board of Commissioners will make the decisions that are best for the entire county. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Ms. Gazaway.
This may be a lot of repetition, because I certainly concur with what Mr. Bagley had said. But one of the biggest things that I'm thinking of as far as District Three is concerned is moving forward with the wastewater treatment and sewage system in the City of Walton Grove and opening up more opportunity for businesses to come in. There have been a lot of times in the past when businesses had approached Walton Grove, I know, and had wanted to come in, but were not able to because it would not be cost-effective to do the private septic system. So we are very anxious to go ahead and move forward with that. Again, the reservoir is critical to our community, to our area, which will also provide opportunities for jobs. This economy is going to be major. We've got to do some things that's going to help our area, and I think we're doing just that. Thanks.
Ma'am, thank you. Mr. Shellnut, one minute, sir.
I think one of the most biggest, the biggest challenges that we're going to have in the next 46 years is what everyone is saying, the infrastructure of our county. But one of the biggest things that we're fixing to have in our county is, in the next 46 years, we're going to bring the Hard Laper Creek Reservoir Project to work. We're going to build it. And who'd ever thought you'd give a dollar for a bottle of water? Water is going to be the most important thing for Walton County in the future. It's going to secure our kids' future. It's going to secure our growth, and I think that's going to be a major part of our next 46 years, and I look forward to the challenge.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Mitchell, one minute, sir.
I agree with a lot of the things that's been said previously, so I won't repeat that, but I want to take it one step farther. When you have growth, you need to look at the total picture. You need to look at the environment. And I've watched the environment for 63 years since I've lived here, and I'm telling you the last 10, 15 years, we are seeing changes in our environment. We're seeing changes in our water. The water coming into the county is not leaving the county the way it did 10 years ago. And this is coming from agricultural reports and state water people. Water is important. The environment's important. I am a strong supporter of the environment, and I'm also a strong supporter of the people having a voice in this county.
Sir, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Banks, one minute, sir.
I think the economy is something that's always on everybody's mind right now. I could stand here and say something about all the business that's been brought in, but you look at Baxter, and I believe everybody puts a pair of pants on in Walton County who took credit for Baxter in Caterpillar County. I don't know what some of the people's done to bring them, but they're here and we're proud of it. We need to be as business-friendly as we can possibly be in this county, but I don't think we need to give the farm away sometime to get them. Walton County, we don't have a whole lot to offer, a big business coming in, and I feel like the Chamber has done an excellent job working with people to bring business in. When you don't have rail and you don't have interstate except over just the tip of I-20, you don't have a whole lot to offer. So if it takes some working with business to bring them in, we need everything we can get in Walton County. That, I feel like we need to keep the police and the fire strong in the county, and I'll always support that. If you don't have a strong fire and police department, then I won't feel like I'm safe when I go to bed at night. But that would be two of the things I would support.
Sir, thank you. Question three, and certainly the final question for all of you. Each district commissioner is elected by the citizens within that district, obviously. How do you propose to work with other commissioners to best serve all of Walton County? And we are going to start with Mr. Mitchell.
I don't think any one person in this county can take credit for everything that's been done in this county. It's a teamwork, and I'm a team player. I've worked in my community as a team player all my life, and when the needs were there in our community, you know, I stepped up to the plate and was a team player. I think that everybody has to get along in harmony, and I think that no, it's like Mr. Bagley said, that the seat is one vote. It's not the entire commission. No one person runs this county. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. We're going to go to Mr. Banks. One minute, sir.
When I was elected to the school board, and there's still a divide in parts, but this county was divided so bad, Loganville and, you don't agree with that, you hadn't been here very long. I feel like I worked with every school board member to do what was best for Walton County. I never said I want this for Loganville or I don't want that for Monroe. I want what was best for Walton County. And for anybody running, or a district commissioner, and school board, or the commissioners, it's got to be a whole county. But I fight for my district, sure, I'll fight for my district. I want what my area needs. But we got to come together, and I have done that. I have worked with a board to do just what's best, and that's all you can ask of any commissioners, and that's what I would hope that everybody running would be working for.
Sir, thank you. Ms. Gazaway, one minute, ma'am.
I believe that my record reflects that I have been able to work with our other commissioners on our board, and I'll tell you, it's very helpful to me, I think, because that we have all of the other board members, because sometimes they may see things from a different perspective than you do, and the bottom goal is to do the best for Walton County. So that's what we strive toward, is listening to everything that everybody says, and we don't always agree, and that's okay. That's why we don't have a one-person board. But it's important to listen to everybody, the comments that they have, learn from those things, and then make decisions in the best interest of our district and Walton County. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. Mr. Bagley, one minute, sir.
I was not born and raised in Walton County. I came here in 1998. I had the privilege of learning the entire county and not being put in a position where I was localized. Mayor Tim Barron assigned me as liaison to the Walton County Chamber of Commerce Board and is a representative on the Industrial Board. For the first year, I didn't have a name. I was "that man from Loganville." Next year, looks like he's going to stay. While I have stayed, and I have gained patience, that I can represent all of Walton County, since redistricting, over half my email list is outside District Two. Each week, I will get a question anywhere from Social Circle to Bold Springs to Monroe to Loganville. I've proven to the Board of Commissioners I can work well. I even took the lead in the absence of District Five on the last rezoning. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Shellnut, one minute, sir.
If elected, I look forward to working with each one, with each person here. If you ever run a small business, you know, there's always that one person that they call when everybody gets in trouble and everything's headed downhill. I'm always that person. Anything goes wrong, they always call me, because as I said before, I'm a people person. I work well with people, and I know I work well with these people here today. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. We are now going to move to your closing remarks. Again, you all have one minute to provide your closing thoughts, and we are going to begin with Mr. Banks. One minute, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to be out this morning. I appreciate the two gentlemen, the opponents here. It's a great process that we, in a country that we live in, that we can sit down and offer what we've got. If that's, if this man's the best, then that's the way it is. That's what people are vying for today. But I've told you what I can offer you. I've told you what I stand for, but my reputation and the way my children and my wife looks at me, more than all that I'm running for, I've never seen anything jeopardize my credibility with them, with you either. But my children and grandchildren have looked after me their entire lives, and I don't want to ever do anything that would make them be ashamed of their daddy. We need to be more people serving today that looks at their family and their God more than the protection election for votes. That's not what's on my mind, and that shouldn't be what's on yours. But I would appreciate your vote on the 31st early if you go. I appreciate it.
Sir, thank you. We're going to move to Mr. Shellnut. One minute, sir.
I've traveled all over the state working in our business, and I'm proud to say that I was born and raised in Walton County. I raised three kids here, and if I'm elected, and I want my three kids to have a brighter future as I've had, I'll work hard for all of your kids to have the same future. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Bagley, one minute.
Thank you for attending this morning. You heard my opening statement. You listened to the answer of my question. Got a couple of other things that you should consider. Why should I return Chuck Bagley as my county commissioner? Now, I'm only... Number one, pull out the records, I have met every commitment I made in the 2008 campaign. No big commitments that I couldn't do because it takes a team, but I met every commitment I made. You elect me your commissioner, I will serve District 2, I will serve Walton County. I have the relationships established across the state, starting at our federal elected officers, down to state elected officials, city, county, and in the community with community organizations. I have the experience, there is no learning curve. I will not start when elected, I will continue when reelected. Please vote for Chuck Bagley starting Monday. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Ms. Gazaway, one minute, ma'am.
Thank you all for this opportunity to being able to speak to you today, and I have talked about my family, because if I started on my family, that's all I'd talk about. But I've got some flyers downstairs that'll tell you a little bit about them, and we're so thankful for my husband and my family. I also thank my church family, as well as just the opportunity to have worked with the citizens of Walton County and District 3. There are three things that I look at when I make a decision on a matter. First of all, I look and see if it's right scripturally and morally, then I'll look and see, is it what the citizens want for Walton County? And then I'll look and see, can we afford it? So those are some of the ways that I make my decisions here. I am ready, I have the experience, I have the relationships in place, I have the knowledge, I'm ready to move forward with Walton County, and I'd appreciate your support on July 31st. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. And, Mr. Mitchell, one minute, sir.
I have built my campaign around three simple ideas: you, representation, and involvement. For the last two years, I've attended many of the meetings in the county, both zoning and board meetings. I was just flabbergasted when I went to the budget meeting at 5 o'clock, and I only saw three people listen to the budget that was presented of $51 million. I think we need more involvement of the people. The people are discontent, they're not happy with their connection to government, and I think they're, the people have gotten lost. We have to put the people back in the process, and that's why I think that you should vote for me. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the opening forum for county commission, District 1, or excuse me, District 2, District 3, and Chair. So, thank you.